Thank you. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a Redmond City Council study session held on Tuesday, July 25th, 2023, commencing at 7:00 p.m. All council members are in attendance, and there are three items on the agenda tonight: Lake Washington School District 2324 School Liaison Officer Program, update to the Bike and Scooter Share Pilot Program, and council talk time. The first item on the agenda is the Lake Washington School District 2324 School Liaison Officer Program. And joining us tonight from Lake Washington School District is Scott Emery. And I will kick it off to you all.
Good afternoon, Council. Daryl Lowe, your police chief, joined, as you said, by Scott Emery tonight to discuss with the upcoming school year and the School Liaison Officer Program. What was provided for you in your packet was an outline of the contract between us and Lake Washington School District for the School Liaison Officer Program. There are some slight changes to the program. If you recall, last year, we piloted the new model for community officer as opposed to an officer being assigned to a specific campus. We have the officer that is primarily assigned to the high school but does it in more of a community model in that it's currently of she, goes around to the different campuses as needed or as requested for services and programs. So as we move forward, we, I'll say, believe that we can continue to provide that high level of service and partnership with the school district for the safety of the students.
Anything else in the program you'd like to highlight for us?
No, we're glad to answer any questions or clarify anything for you guys as it relates to the program moving forward.
Council members, any questions? Council Vice President Kritzer.
I'll kick us up. I'm sure people were just gathering their thoughts there. So first question that I have, so there's the new name that's happening here. Can you give us a little context, one, of just how the school district is thinking about this across the district, because it sounds like this is now a district-wide strategy? And give us a little background on how we came to this new model. It sounds like it was partially based on some of the piloting we did in Redmond. And then I'm also curious, for the Redmond position, what is different from what has been the previous year? And what you envision for the future in terms of the role? Because it does seem like some things that were a part of the role are no longer scoped in. So that was a couple of different questions. Hopefully, you can manage them.
I can read my questions. I might need help. You started with the question around what do we envision around the district, not just within Redmond. So Redmond did pilot that model of officers serving multiple schools than one school and staying in one school. And so that pilot was successful, and so we moved that to all of our other partners, so Kirkland and Sammamish and King County. So our vision is that we can provide a level of service to all schools, not just the one school that the SRO was stationed at, so to speak, and that there's more opportunity for those services to be provided at the, say, the elementary levels as well. And so we've approached the change in that way, and it's now part of the whole program. That was one. Then there was another question.
I guess the other question was specifically how this will impact in Redmond, the move to the liaison position versus the resource officer. Is it just a name change? Or is there, it seemed like there was some change in scope. It seemed like it's more now going to be even more kind of ad hoc, like as needed for those services that the officer will visit? Or can you describe some of the changes?
Yeah, so I would say it's primarily a name change or a programmatic change. The services themselves will not change. We will continue to work with the district to kind of scope out the, I'll call them the operational procedures, you know, for the actual program. So it would not be a significant change for us in the service that we provide. Currently, we have the one SRO. It will remain, you know, with the one SRO serving the Redmond, you know, school properties. So I don't see a significant change in it. And then again, we'll continue to work with the district and work with, I'll say, both communities, the Redmond community and the Lake Washington School District community in their feedback and input as the program, I'll say, kind of materializes and moves forward.
Did you have another one or no? Okay. Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you so much. The reason I like this conversation so much is because of the constituency that we share. And often, we get from Redmond residents, we get school district-related questions and things like that. Local government feels pretty similar to a lot of folks. And that's why I was curious, in the packet materials, I was curious to hear a little bit more about the feedback in the new model that you've gotten from your school community, from the families, as well as the students, and how that helped inform the decision to move forward across the district with this model.
So we began an engagement process, actually, we began a process to begin a process, you know how that goes. And so we'll actually be beginning our feedback in September. This was a change in model to accommodate some budget reductions as well that helped us move forward to keep the program and retain it in its current status. But it allowed us to reduce some of the budget attached to the program. And in addition, the feedback that we've had, because Redmond's been piloting for a year, has been fairly positive in that schools have felt an additional support with having the officer be able to move about from school to school as needed a little bit more than in the past. And so we haven't had any feedback that has been negative or anything that has impacted the decision to move forward. But beginning with the in-September-October time period when we begin the formal community engagement, we'll be opening that conversation back up.
Maybe it would be helpful for us to receive some communication about where families can be navigated toward giving their feedback in case we're, again, getting questions from community.
Yeah, totally understand. We'll have a very public communication program to announce those opportunities, and it'll be open for all.
And this is kind of an unfair question, so I'm not asking it. But I imagine a year from now, you might come back and we might be having a different conversation. So, because you actually said there was a budget constraint that also influenced this decision. So a year from now, two years from now, three years from now, what would you want, budget aside, if you could have it? Those aren't options you have this year, so that's why it's an unfair question. But I'll be curious to follow along in the conversation and to hear what you all learned and the feedback you get from community.
Yeah, I'd be happy to return and have that conversation in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Anderson.
This is somewhat along the lines of a Stewart's comment. Just curious how changes in enrollment will affect this program, sort of on the budget side. My understanding is enrollment is dropping, and that's one of the reasons behind the budget cuts. So what would increase the number of staffing required for this program or cause a reduction in that staffing?
Yeah, I don't claim to be a school finance expert, but student enrollment does play a part, of course, in our budget. Can you clarify your question a little bit for me so I can better answer?
So if we're essentially creating this program to have at least personnel staff it, what are the indicators that we can be aware of as a council to understand if there's a resource need or an opportunity to pull back on capacity?
At this point, we're comfortable where we are with our budget and with this particular program. It was reduced over the last couple of years quite significantly in our budget. And so right now, we're where we're comfortable, and I don't anticipate additional cuts.
Sure, I can support that. I should have not said that in that way. I would say, anticipating no further cuts, would you anticipate growing the program if enrollment?
That depends on the outcome of the engagement with our community, too.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a big part of the next step.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fields.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
So I'm looking at your outcomes, and I'm sure we've covered this in past meetings, but would be interested in hearing your comments. So on the five outcomes listed, I can see that four potentially would contribute to the middle one, which is the one my question is about, which is help keep students out of the criminal justice system. Is the program been successful and what specifically, how does it do that?
That's a great question. Under current state rules through OSPI, one of the objectives is to eliminate or mitigate officers' involvement in student discipline and in school matters. And historically, maybe not in Lake Washington, but historically, SROs have been involved in a number of student discipline issues. Our objective is to leave student discipline and issues to the school to the school and have the SROs or the SLOs really be involved in law enforcement itself, if that's needed in the school, but not into student discipline or misbehaviors and things like that. That can lead to inappropriate outcomes. And so our goal is to allow our staff and our district administrators to manage those kinds of issues. That's a very intentional move on the part of the state of Washington to write that into the regulation. And so this program moves us in our thinking to a place where our officers are serving within the scope and the expertise of an officer and not in the scope of a school administrator.
So just a quick follow-up. It's not necessarily that the service that's provided would help a student stay out of the criminal justice system. It's just that the service that is provided won't initiate or instigate or escalate them being in the criminal justice.
I can agree with that, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I think that answered one of my questions, for sure, so I appreciate that. So Redmond is only one part of the Lake Washington School District. What does this program look like in Kirkland? Are they following, are they doing a similar pilot program to what we did? What does that look like across the district?
So the copy of the MOU you received is the template for all of our partners, and so they're identical.
Great. And so every high school will have one resource officer?
Every high school pattern, feeder pattern will have one assigned officer.
Okay. And then, so one of the big issues right now for facing our youth is mental health crises and suicide rates. What is the partnership going to look like in regards to mental health? Will the officers have training? Is there more mental health resources available within the school district? How does this all work together?
That's a really great question, and I'm one piece of that puzzle, so I can answer it from my chair here. Some of the dollars that were eliminated from the SRO program went directly into student mental health services, and so that was a real positive thing for us to do. And we have begun some stronger partnerships with our Student Services Division that provides the counseling and the mental health services to our students. And so I would say, you know, there's a direct connection that didn't exist in the past between my team, which is Safety Services, and Student Services. And we're looking at ways that those things can work together better and creating some systems that provide more mental health services to kids than just a police service. And so I don't know if there is something specific from the Redmond officer that can be spoken to, but access to community services is also one of our outcomes that we're looking for for students and the connection that perhaps our partnerships with our local law enforcement would have that are stronger based on those connections and community services. So I think there's great intention to provide an additional layer and level of mental health services into the school through these partnerships and articulating it that way.
Great, that's great to hear. Chief Lowe, could you address the training that the officer will get for mental health?
So from a mental health perspective, the SRO that's assigned to the school receives the state-required SRO training. The, I'll say, the collaboration that we have with the school district, as was mentioned before, if it's a matter, a mental health matter or other matter that is non-law enforcement related, the school district will take the lead on it, and we would support with them. As you know, we have our embedded mental health professional, so we would consult with her in that particular realm. And in turn, she would consult with the services that the district has. They would, you know, make the assessment as to what referrals or services are needed. But we would basically take the district lead, you know, on that particular issue because it's not a long first-related issue. It's a mental health issue related to a student within the school district. So that would not be our primary, we would not necessarily take primary on that particular circumstance, but would support whatever services and program the district has and then whatever services and programs that our mental health provider could identify that might be of service to that particular student and/or family.
Great, thank you. I will go with Carson, and then Kritzer, and then Stewart.
Thank you. So I don't love changing terms just for fun, so I'm curious what the reasoning behind changing it from a SRO to now a school liaison officer. Why? And where did that change come from? Was it district-led or city-led? And what's the crux of why we are contemplating changing it?
Yeah, there might not be a really deep answer to that, except that we felt it was a district-led decision, not a city-led decision. But we felt that the program was more of a liaison than a positioned school resource officer in a school, and that was what prompted the need or the interest in a change in title. We were also, I don't think concerned is the word, but we were also worried a little bit about the ability to staff all the positions that we had. We did not cut any current positions in any of the program where they were filled. The positions we cut were positions that had not been filled in the last couple of years due to whatever staffing reasons. So the service level remains the same as it has been for the last couple of years, but we don't have any growth opportunity left in the actual funding sitting out there for positions. And so as we made those changes and reduced the program and moved towards the pilot that had been happening in Redmond, it looked more like a liaison opportunity than just a school resource officer in a school. And so that was what prompted the interest in making a change.
I'd follow on that real quickly. So it looks like the federal government uses both terms but uses the new term in, more in the military context versus what we kind of all know, you know, SROs. And so I just, I don't know, I'm concerned that it's, people won't know what that means. I mean, everybody knows what an SRO is. When you change the vernacular, sometimes people, it takes them a while to understand, oh, it's the same thing, it's just a name change. And like I said, I don't love changing terms just for fun. There's, so it, I guess I'm, you know, functionally, what makes it more of, because, I mean, I see what they do in the community, what they do at the schools. It's really a resource for the kids in the schools, obviously also to administrators and teachers. But the idea is to have that presence there in the schools for the benefit of the kids. And so that's what I think, it just, I don't really love the new term, I guess, is what I'm saying. So.
I appreciate your feedback. Thanks.
Council Vice President Kritzer.
Thanks. And yeah, respect all the discussion. I would say, I actually kind of like the new term and the signaling, because it sounds like there has been discussion within the school district of trying to reimagine a little bit of what this is and trying a new model. So it does help to signal to the community kids. We have also heard from community members that have wanted to not kind of have that ongoing police presence in the schools, but make sure that we do have, that, you know, they're kind of doing their role, as you said, really focused on the unique things that police can do, not necessarily the administration or some of those other pieces. So I'm intrigued by that. And also appreciate hearing that you're going to be going to get some feedback from the community. Will that be getting feedback from both students as well as from parents and other stakeholders?
Yeah, absolutely. We developed a program we're calling the Community Connectors, and it is a program that is open for anyone that wants to participate and with some defined tiered levels of commitment. So if you want to be at meetings, you can commit to being at meetings. If you want to be in a focus group or be surveyed or have some sort of short-term interview experience, you can opt into that. Or you can opt into a distribution list and be kept in the loop of what's been going on. So rather than tell people who gets to be part in which way and invite them to be one things or another, we're just really opening an invitation to anyone in the community to participate at whatever level they're ready to commit to. And so that will include students, it will include our PTSA partners. We have a whole list of invitation names that we've developed, but not limited to that at all. It's just we need to kick it off with something. And so once that's out there, it'll be open to anyone that wants to participate, parents, anybody that wants to join in.
That's great to hear. And I will say, we, in the past, when we've been doing our budget process, we've heard from groups of students about this topic, having asked to be able to change our investment as a city in this. And so I'd be happy to pass along the contact information from the students I've engaged with on this topic, since part of the discussion was around how this is a bit of a collaborative decision with the school district to decide on this program. So I would love to make sure that they can give that feedback as you continue to envision the program. One question I have, speaking of budget, is with this new vision, it sounds like there hasn't been a huge change for Redmond from last year, but does it change our budget in terms of how much we're going to anticipate for this program?
It does not. The changes have no fiscal or financial impact for us or our budget.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Stewart.
The conversation's kind of moved away, but I'll pick up on budget, which is, just to remind the council that actually, through our human services funding last year, it's about $300,000 that we invested in behavioral health and case management services for youth-serving providers, including two that provide culturally responsive services and one that is most definitely embedded throughout the Lake Washington School District, all of our high schools, all of our middle schools, and provide some services in elementary schools, too. So on that topic, we make investments in lots of other ways, too.
Thank you. Any final questions on this item? And is the ask for August 2nd on this? Or what is the ask on this?
Yes, August 2nd.
August 2nd.
It's actually, just says informational with a milestone for you all in August, is what's listed in the memo.
So we got some conflicting information in our memo versus?
Correct, so, yeah, we'll correct it. So this is informational. Once we finalize, the actual MOU will come back for authorization for signature on the contract.
Okay. So we will see this again, possibly at a committee for approval towards consent?
Yes.
All right. Thank you so much. Thanks for being with us tonight. Appreciate your time. Next on our agenda is the update to the Bike and Scooter Share Pilot Program. Director of Planning and Community Engagement, Carol Helen, will be introducing the item and all of the fabulous people that she brought with her today.
Thank you, Council President Forsyth. Good evening, council members. Again, good to see you. I'm Carol Helen, the Planning and Community Development Director. And tonight, staff from the Transportation, Planning and Engineering Division will be giving you a preservation, preservation, presentation on micro-mobility. This is formally branded as Scooter Share when you approved the program for the pilot back in 2019. And I'm joined this evening by Kim Keeling and Vanji, oh my gosh, I've been on vacation too long, Vanji Garcia and Francesca Liberty. So they will be discussing tonight the pilot program goals, the current status, and next steps. And after tonight's session, we'll be holding another session with you with regard to program permanence and any recommendations you may have. So with that, I'm going to send, hand the mic to Vanji Garcia so that she can do the presentation.
Good evening. So today, just as a reminder, Red, the Redmond City Council initiated the discussion of bike share in 2018. And following direction to move ahead, the city launched a pilot scooter share program in 2019. Several factors helped to shape the goals and structure of the city's pilot program. The transportation master plan had a goal strategy to improve travel choices and to, especially to improve the first last mile connection. Community support was received in support for this in a spring 2018 questionnaire. And expansion of scooter and bike share programs in the Puget Sound happened with other several cities across other cities in the region. Shifts in the micro-mobility market favoring scooters over bikes. Based on the 2010 travel diary in the city, the average length of all trips taken was 2.2 miles, which equaled a 15-minute scooter ride. So an electric scooter share pilot offered a new way to improve travel choices by reducing the number of short-distance vehicle trips while making the transportation system more sustainable. Since the pilot was initiated, there have been some bumps in the road, which can happen with any new program. The unexpected pause in the pilot due to the COVID-19 pandemic and several changes in staff are reasons for the delay in reporting back to council. The issues matrix that was attached to the memo includes some of the answers and responses from over the years that was from staff that were prior to who is here today. What staff have learned in summarizing the performance of the pilot of the program is that the usage data seems to suggest that people have gotten used to scooters as a first-last-mile option in the city. There will always be people who are not fans, and the city can only control what is in the permit conditions, because this is a right-of-way permit. Today's study session will go over the data that we have through May 2023 and what has changed in the program.
Thank you. Good evening. So this slide here, we're going over the customer service requests and what types of requests they cover. We have retrieval, improper parking, obstruction, as well as safety and user suggestions. The program to date has, or through May, excuse me, has received 208 customer service requests during the pilot program, which was higher at the beginning of the program and is now close to zero. 29 different members of the public have submitted customer service requests through Q Alert or the service request tool on our website or the app that we use for the city. And we don't have the ability to track the individuals who contact fire, police, or LIME directly, so we don't have any information of any kind, demographic or otherwise. And then looking at the requests here in the chart, LIME received 82 service requests. And then the Q Alerts for the city service requests, we had 76. And 45 of the 76 Q Alerts were from one individual community member. And we worked with LIME and that individual and worked out a reporting so that they, that individual can report directly to LIME and get those issues resolved even quicker. And then... And then for Fire, we have the nine requests and Police has 17. So then in this chart here, we're showing the customer service requests by year and then also the type and the number for each type of request. We've received nine reports of injury via Fire, one from Police, and none from Lime or through Q Alert for injuries. The Police requests were tracked for the duration of the pilot, where Fire tracked customer service requests that they received for three months in 2019. And then after that, they stopped tracking. We've only received injury information through these channels. Lime responds and resolves all of their service requests within two hours or less. And many times when a service request is sent on to Lime, they've already resolved it when I reach out to them. And they're very responsive in resolving any issues or making changes that we might need to address issues that we're having.
All right. So this chart shows the ridership statistics of the pilot program during 2019, prior to the pause for COVID-19. So there was a soft launch in this pilot of this pilot program in May 2019. Lime was the only vendor who applied, and they were permitted with a pilot right-of-way permit contract, which started on July 30th, 2019, which explains that bit of a jump between July and August. Council updates during this time came in April 2019, October 2019, and February 2020. The program then paused in March of 2020 because of the pandemic and then resumed again in November of that year of 2020. And then program extensions have kept the pilot program in place until now. So this chart shows ridership statistics throughout the life of the pilot from November 2020, when it resumed after COVID, until this May. As shown in these charts, the summer months tend to be the higher usage months. For example, one weekend this past June, June 2023, the Pacific Northwest had the third highest ridership worldwide for Lime, which followed only London and Paris. And so because of this and other, you know, continued ridership, Lime decided to add 20 e-bikes in the city and test e-bikes now, which started in July. As shown by this yellow line on this chart, the which shows the median trip length, the median trip over the life of the program has been 0.8 miles in distance and eight minutes in duration, which shows that this micro mobility program has been a viable first-last-mile connection. So for next steps for us include this conversation today, which will discuss the performance of the pilot program thus far. Following our discussion today, the three of us will return in September for a staff report that will include June and July statistics to accompany these. And at that staff report, we will go over the draft permit requirements and the recommendations for a permanent micro mobility program. And then with council direction, we hope to move forward with the permanent micro mobility program in spring of 2024. And with that, we'll take your questions.
Thank you so much. Councilmembers, any questions? Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you. I'm looking at the chart that we were just looking at with all the lines and the yellow one going across the top. And I just want to talk about the the months that have the least amount, the colder months. It looks to me like the colder months, I just want to make sure I'm reading this correctly, it's still like sitting around or just under like 2,000 trips on scooters in those lower months in our city. Is that is that about right? Maybe 1,500 in January? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Council Vice President Kritzer.
Well, first, just want to say thanks for working on this and bringing us this information. And to all the staff that have worked on this whole pilot over these several years, I've actually in quite a few different regional transportation forums that I represent the city on over the last several years, gotten questions from other cities that are like, I heard Redmond's doing this pilot. We're really interested. And because of the great data that we've been gathering, been able to pass it on to them and be able to share, especially some of the things we've done to be able to address some different resident concerns. So I'm definitely really interested in being able to continue this and excited about the bike rollout, hopefully, that will continue on. One question I have in terms of moving from a pilot to permanent regulations or permanent, I don't know what the the term exactly is. Would would we be setting essentially the ability for any for any vendor to come and operate within that regulatory environment? Or would it be a specific thing we're just making permanent with Lime?
This is what today's conversation is about. Talking amongst ourselves and looking at what other the cities that still have scooter share program, our recommendation in the fall will likely say it depends on the limit of vehicles that we're allowing in the city. And Seattle has three vendors, and they it's a lot bigger of a square footage of a city, and they have a little bit more staff. Everett has one vendor, a limit of 300 vehicles. Our permit that you saw the the draft, the pilot, is limiting 400 vehicles with one vendor. And so we have suggested that if we use one vendor, we have to show how we choose one vendor. Because if we allow more vehicles as city of Seattle, you kind of have to limit the amount of vehicles you allow within the city. But how do you figure out which vendor has how many? And that's a lot to figure out. So it seems our recommendation to you all and how you feel about it is one vendor, keep it 400 vehicles. And as you can see with the slide of our stats, we don't actually reach 400 at all. We think it's a pretty successful. We have the average daily scooters deployed is 134. So if you would like, we could increase it if you'd like and have more. But that's a lot to manage.
And one follow-up question on that. I guess I think that would make sense to be able to set a certain limit and to look at what we've been averaging to use that data. Will we include in it some sort of future steps to say, when do we reevaluate as we grow? Because it is a little hard to know sometimes unless you provide it to know if there would be more taking up on it. Because I know, for example, especially with this, it's like, if you are thinking about using it and it's easy to find one, then you might be more likely to take up the use of it. But if they're more scarce, then you may not become a rider. So I guess I'm curious what that plan in the long run would look like when we get to that conversation.
Councilmember Fields.
What is emerging as new and good ideas to make it better?
Well, we thought, as comparing a lot of cities, it was a surprise to us that a lot of cities just did away with the program. And it seems like we've been doing good. But I think when having a really good relationship with the vendor we have so far has been great. They've been responsive. And so that's what the conversation in the fall is. What are the criteria that that guarantee that great relationship with the vendor? I think is the key. And what I'd like to hear from you guys is and from all of you is what is what would look like a good scooter share program to you? These are the statistics to show you the data today. And it seems like it's being used. What I'd like to see is, I mean, that's why we want to come back in the fall because the summer is going to show even more ridership, I'm hoping. And then I think we can see what the conversation shows then. We will come back with our recommendations of what that program will look like. But I think if you look at the memo, I would hate to do away with the program.
So what occurs to me would be things like safety, not just the streets, but safety in securing the the equipment, like shelters, targeted locations. We obviously have Light Rail coming up. We have other, I don't know if the data is clear enough to say, here's where typical rides begin and end. But the more we can enhance those very popular routes with infrastructure, that seems to me like that would contribute to the success of the program. And if I was a vendor, I would go, oh, my God, I really want to have this relationship with that city because they understand that it's not just us alone that's going to make this successful. So that's my thoughts on.
Well, and Lime has actually always offered to come to anything we've asked them to. They were at Derby Days, they were at Routes to Rails. And if you requested more educational for things that we've heard of, the anecdotal stories of like, I don't know how to ride the scooters. I think they're at Move Redmond events, the thing coming up in August on the Open Streets event. So they have been very responsive to us when we've asked.
So quick, thank you. Is there any discussion about intercity movement with public transportation? Like taking a scooter from here to Bellevue?
Well, Bellevue doesn't allow scooters.
Or somewhere.
And that's the that's a that's a sticky subject because the only ones that we have found that still allow is Seattle and Everett.
So the world does stop at the edge of Redmond.
So unfortunately.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. Very exciting to see this program sort of grow and develop over the years. That's that's great. I've got a couple of questions. I think a few of them are along the lines of where Mr. Fields might have been going with this. The first one is, do we have a way to get more specific data or at least understand where the trips start and end? Specifically, I'm interested in first and last mile, if it's being used for that purpose to access transit. And I don't know if we have that information.
We have asked Lime. We get very interesting graphics, but we don't get the GIS data. So we've tried, we can try again.
Okay. I think that would be great for the follow-up presentation if we can get that. Thank you. Very excited to see the bike bike share data as well. I'm assuming that you mentioned that because we will get that for next time as well. Okay, great. Thank you. And then what's the timeframe for reopening the contract for a vendor on if it were to be competitive? Like, is it two years, four years? What are we looking at with that?
We have thought about it. So if we move forward with a competitive bid, the if we the so we have our conversation in September. We let's say we finalize criteria at the end of the year. Our goal is still to move forward with a permanent micro mobility program in the spring. So our the competitive time period will be beginning next year.
What about the total length? Like, when's the?
Oh, sorry, the contract. Two-year, two-year with to renew for two-year stints.
Okay, great. So it doesn't go out for competition until every four years? Am I understanding that correctly? Right?
Yeah, I think we had said maybe even six, two of the two-year extension.
Yes, I'm going to mess that up. Do you want to explain that?
I think we had said, well, yeah. And this was something we were still kind of deciding, and that would be part of our conversation next time. But we had decided a two-year program with two options for two years each to continue to renew. So total of six years had if we elect for both of those options.
Okay, great, thank you. And then just kind of long range. Would love to hear a little bit more about how you view steps that council could take to establish this program more permanently and what kind of infrastructure needs we would have within the city.
Well, before I forget, the reason why we went with a two-year and the total of six is because we thought about what people getting used to one app and managing two apps and just change in general for people. So that's the reason why. So the permanent, I don't think there would, we'd have to get the the public engagement out of that this is becoming permanent. I think not a lot of people know that this is a pilot program. And that's the major hurdle for my assessment.
Great. Well, I look forward to hearing more in the fall.
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart.
Thanks so much. And on that note, I work in Seattle where there are multiple vendors. And I would just say it's so much more intimidating to 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 use a product for the first time if there's choices. And in Redmond, we have just one choice. And for me, I think that helps lend itself toward experimentation for the first time. And as you said, I've been really impressed with Lime. I mean, they were at Derby Days, and they had like a free code for people to try it out. And they were there with the vehicles and all of that. So they seemed to be, you know, good partners. So so my my lean is toward having one vendor. And I actually like the up to 400 vehicles because, as Councilmember Fields alluded to, Light Rail isn't here yet, but we're talking about bringing on a permanent program that would hopefully support that. And in addition to the first and last mile that was brought up by some of my other colleagues, if we could get the data, which I understand you may not be able to, I would also be interested in the the trips along key corridors. So for instance, here in this area of the city, we have the Redmond Central Connector and we have the Sammamish River Trail, both of which can get us across big sections of the city quickly on those vehicles. So that's that's something of interest to me as well. And I wonder about the future. I mean, at the Eastside Transportation Partnership, we recently heard that on the day that Amazon, all the employees came back or in the month of May, when employees came back to the office, 100 other businesses in Seattle reactivated their ORCA card programs. That's a lot, right, of infrastructure, but or a lot of membership. But it makes me think about these scooter shares. And I know that there's there's a subsidized membership for low-income folks to use the scooters. But it'd be very cool to somehow leverage our relationship with this company that if they are to stay in business, they're incentivized to stay in business with us and our local employers. Because if we are going to have these employment centers, especially for that first-last-mile thing, I just think there's some cool synergy that could could happen there. I would I would love to see more of that. And lastly, I just want to thank you all for the matrix that involved the entire story going back through multiple councils and, you know, being able to read the the story way back from, you know, some of our former colleagues. So I very much appreciated how you approached all of this. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson.
One question I skipped on my five five questions earlier. I would be really interested to see in if the length of trip is changing over time. It looked a little bit like it was increasing. So that would be really helpful kind of conceptually for if people are taking longer trips and understanding the need for the like the type of vehicle or something like that. And that would be helpful. Thank you.
Council Vice President Kritzer.
Just one other thought that occurred to me for our next discussion. I think it's interesting hearing some of the safety data. And it seems like, you know, overall, it's a fairly small number. Obviously, we wish it was zero for any sort of accident. But but I am interested because I do think that there's not like a huge amount of helmet wearing, whether when we look at the potential to make this permanent, if there's any sort of additional educational campaign Lime or whoever the vendor is wants to do or that we could do just to be able to increase helmet wearing on these vehicles.
That is kind of that's we have already also talked about that. And that was one of the items that you could also suggest in the permanent requirements of the permit, you know, how many, you know, events for safety education. That's why I mentioned what we can control as part of the permit requirements. Whether or not people follow rules is something that we can't always control. But we can put it in what they need to do as what the vendor has to do as part of what they sign up to as that they need to roll out. So and if we, when we make this a competitive process to be chosen, they can show what they've done for other cities and jurisdictions.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Carson.
Excuse me. I was just going to say, well, to Councilmember Kritzer's point, it's kind of problematic, certainly to require it, because King County repealed the helmet law for bicycles. So, I mean, I do think it's wise. I mean, I certainly, I mean, I, from time to time, have a working motorcycle, and I certainly wear my helmet in this state. But even in states where it's not required, I would not be seen, or would not be riding a motorcycle without one. But, so, but I think it's problematic if there's, there's no real, you know, county law or county ordinance that codifies that. So I don't know what you do there. I mean, certainly, a bicycle helmet would be wise on a scooter. So, thank you.
Am I correct in recalling the one time that I, the first time that I tried the Lime scooter, it had a, you had to select that you were waving your rights if you weren't wearing a helmet? Is that something that was on the screen, or is that something we could request?
No.
Are you answering it? No?
I'm not sure. I would have, I'll have to.
It's been, it's been a while since I've been on one. But, yeah, I do, I also second the, like, I would definitely wear a helmet. The, I just recall, the first time I rode one, it was definitely a bit to get used to, very different than a bicycle, which I'm much more comfortable on, which is why I'm excited to see the bikes being rolled out. I do have a couple of questions as well. I appreciate all the conversation from my colleagues. I'm also in favor of the one vendor and the multiple-year contract extension, to your point about the, you know, getting used to an app. That was the first thing that I thought in my head. If I have three apps on my phone, and I have to figure out which one is near me, that's just going to cause me frustration. So I appreciate the competitive bid and the multi-year renewal options. And I think one thing that I would like to see in that contract would be the response time and the metrics for response times, and making sure that, you know, Lime has been a good partner with us and being very responsive, getting scooters back in the right places in a timely fashion. But we don't know if another partner would, would be that responsive. So I think that's one thing I would be excited to see. I was interested in why FIRE stopped tracking the responses that they got.
Unfortunately, we don't have that data. It was several staff members ago when that was being tracked and.
And there was a pandemic in there and all kinds of stuff.
Yeah. And we haven't been able to find anything in the files that has any information about that, why it was only three months.
Okay. And there's no, there's no, we're not going to restart FIRE tracking those at all? Or have there not, there's not been a need to?
Yeah, we haven't had a conversation with them about that. But we certainly would, I mean, I think it would be beneficial to have them tracking on a regular basis. I'm just not sure what's involved for them on their side.
Got it.
Tracking. The level of detail that FIRE provided versus police was a lot more. So I think it's easy. And police only had one injury, you know, they had 17, but only one was an injury.
So were those nine injuries only during that three months?
Yeah, that's what, what FIRE received that.
There could have been potentially more. We just aren't tracking it.
We didn't receive. So.
We didn't, yeah.
We summarized everything we found in, in the files. And so that, what we shared is everything that we found at the time. So that was in 2019. So we can ask if we were receiving anything after that that was related to scooters. So it's the question if they, if FIRE was receiving any data to transfer over to us. And we can always ask.
That would be great. I would appreciate that. Thank you. And thank you also for the matrix of questions, because it reminded me of my paint question. And I know that was something we were going to explore once we knew this was going to be a permanent program. And have we talked about that further, about having zones where scooters are parked during the permanent program? I know Lime tries to realign them in the same spaces all the time. So I think those would, in my mind, those would be the places we would want to encourage and have that paint. And then I would hope that seeing scooters in the painted designated area lined up nicely would also encourage folks to remember to keep them out of the way, remember to not just knock them over, those kinds of things.
Well, Bellevue tried that. And it, remember, Bellevue doesn't allow them anymore. So what they did do is, when, so when Kim and I took over the program, that's where they worked with us. And so they incentivized positive parking. And so you, I believe they got incentives, like if, like percent off if they actually kept parking correctly. And then they aren't allowed to park incorrectly. Is that correct? How did I say it, Kim?
Yeah, that's correct. They were, received credits towards rides. And then also areas where they shouldn't be parked or left have been geofenced out so that they're not able to leave them in those areas.
Right. I have experienced that. So, so we are not necessarily exploring painting, or we are?
Well, remember, that's, the painting actually creates maintenance issues. So paint with water, with rain, then that doesn't look very good. So I think before we want to start asking for paints, that's when we have to work with MOC. And do we want paint not looking refreshed all the time? That puts stress on our staff resources. So I just, we can always ask that. But before we do that, we should wonder if that is a problem that we need to address. Because one of the slides says that Lime does the foot patrols. And we have the data that they actually do go out, if they see a problem that is being fixed, they just fix it. So.
Okay. To be continued, I guess.
Yeah.
All right. Councilmember Carson?
Thank you. So on that topic, so I was, I went to Derby Days, and I bumped into a community member who's impacted by these from time to time. And so, but I was on my way out, and, and we talked, it was a good conversation. Literally on my way to my car, the, someone had parked one at just the entrance to the crosswalk, in just a terrible place because it's an ADA crosswalk, it's a mid-block crossing. It was, and so I moved it. But, and I think that that's, that kind of proactive on the part of pedestrians, I mean, you know, I, half of my family were in wheelchairs at one point or another, it seems. And my mom, my uncle, my father-in-law. And so it's just kind of something that's just ingrained in me. But, you know, if you see it in the wrong place, move it so it's not in the wrong place. Because this was, I mean, literally, you know, someone in a wheelchair could not have gotten through there because it was parked like right at the bottom of the, of the ramp up to the sidewalk. And you're like, why, why is it there? They're kind of heavy and not, when they're not activated, they're not really that easy to move. But, I mean, you can lift them up and just move them. But, so I would suggest that pedestrians, when you see those kinds of things, think about, you know, the neighbors in the community that can't actually move them to get out of their way so that they can have access to the sidewalks too. So anyway, I don't know what can be done about that other than, because in my conversation with him, it was, it's impossible when it's blocking your way. You know, you can't physically move it. And you can't necessarily rely on bumping into someone who could move it for you. So it's one of those things where I understand completely where he's coming from. And it's a, it's a very difficult thing to get right, which is why I'm really on the fence about continuing it. Because I think behavior's gotten better, but I think it's, it's a learned thing. And I don't know how we necessarily fix that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fields?
I'm not necessarily convinced that though a single vendor is a good idea, mostly because I hardly ever think a single vendor is a good idea. The question I have is, can we in the RFP define a standard user look to the app? And say, if your app doesn't look like this, or if your user interface doesn't look something close to this, you will be deducted an awful lot of points or whatever?
That is a good question. I would have to ask our TIS director for that one.
Part of me, what occurs to me is in, always going back to my coffee business, but in the coffee business, one of the things I've noticed lately is point of sale are starting to standardize. They were very different for years. And now they're sort of, look the same and have the same feel and the same reward system. So I think the flexibility is there. Just a thought.
That's a good point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any final thoughts or questions on scooter share, bike share before September?
I have a question. I mean, Lime has offered to come and talk to council. I don't know which option it would be. And we can always talk. They've, some of the technical questions, they might be the best to answer.
Maybe we could get that GIS if we have them in the room.
You asking them and might be a better answer. So.
Councilmembers, would you be interested in inviting Lime to talk to us? Or has this been enough? Councilmember Fields?
I'd say yes.
Yes. Was that a yes? I saw three, four thumbs up. So I think that's a, let's invite them maybe to the next conversation.
The next time when we are here.
Yeah. Yep. All right. That is, that is in the affirmative. All right. Thank you so much. We look forward to seeing you in September.
Thank you.
Thank you. The last item on our agenda is council talk time. Councilmember Anderson submitted a Hopper document, and I will hand it over to Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you.
Thank you. So this ended, we ended up receiving some additional comments from Mr. Haney on this item. And I will reframe the question to bring back council's attention to Salary Commission. Just for the folks on the internet or watching on TV, the problem statement that's stated in the proposal says, in March 2023, the council appointed seven Salary Commissioners recommended by the mayor and staff in accordance with existing ordinances 211, 2157, and 2262, in, which were passed many, many years ago, even before Mr. Carson was on the council. The Salary Commissions who were appointed were understood to have met the minimum qualifications as stated by law for competency, capacity, and residency at the time of appointment. For the 2023 Commission, the mayor took executive action to remove all volunteer commissioners at once, effectively abolishing the commission and preventing it from completing its mandate, which is contrary to what, if you recall, council agreed to put as a priority in 2022 on our council priorities list. So what I'm proposing in this Hopper form is to repeal the ordinance 3116. A second step could be to take action by motion on new business next week to reinstate the commissioners. We have learned that this is not something that council has authority to do, according to Mr. Haney, the city attorney, and then amend the budget as needed to accommodate any proposed increases or decreases in salary that are recommended by the 2023 Commission. Staff would need to prepare this material for the Finance Committee in accordance with any procedures that would require a budget amendment. Another piece of information is that the city clerk has received a document of the Salary Commissioner's work as effective June 12th stating what their proposed salary increases were. In feedback that's been received to date, I can share this with the council as well. I shared it with Ms. Forsyth, but maybe you can forward that to us at council. Thank you. But he said that council does have the authority, if the law is repealed, to set its own salaries and may consider, but is not limited to considering, the information that's been prepared by the Salary Commission so far to date. That would only affect the council members who are being, beginning a new term effective 2024 next year. So there would be three existing positions, including my own. So I'm not particularly arguing for my own interests at the moment, that would still have a salary disparity between the council members. So I'm curious what council is thinking about this, what we can do. My specific question to Mr. Haney was, what recourse does council have to accomplish this item, which is currently listed as an incomplete item on our council plan?
And I will frame the conversation that if we want to talk about the specifics of the ordinance and actions on the ordinance, that is the conversation for open session. If we want to talk about the legal potentials and legal risks from actions, that is something that we can talk about in an executive session. Mayor Bernie?
I just want to clarify one thing. There actually has been no proposal by the Salary Commission because though, though the city might have received a document from community members, there was no Salary Commission at the time.
And I will, I will open up the floor for conversation.
No, I want to thank Councilmember Anderson for putting this forward in writing. I expressed my thoughts pretty strongly a few weeks ago. And I felt, my, my main concern was, as Councilmember Anderson framed it, this is incomplete. It's just left hanging. And I'm not, and as I expressed then, I'm not sure if the, the action taken was consistent with a lot of things. I don't want to get in trouble. I think I was scolded briefly two weeks ago when I said, I'm not sure it's legal. I'm still not sure it's legal. I certainly feel that just to leave it, for council, as Councilmember Stewart said, I'm done with this. I'm not done with this because I feel like this was a very, an abrupt and action taken that left us in hanging. I mean, there, there needs to be a resolution. Either whatever, whoever has the authority on checks and balances to make sure that the actions that the mayor took are appropriate and, and considered, or what is the next step? No one has proposed a next step. We heard a next step tonight from Councilmember Anderson, and I appreciate that. But I also read the city attorney's email. And that doesn't, and also, as someone who would be advocating for salary not in my own benefit, I'm, I'm willing to do that if that's what the council thinks is a resolution. So I would not receive an increase. And I have, I'll just say it again, I have no intent of running in two years. So if the council wants to take the action to set salaries for future council members, I'm okay with that. But I do feel we need to do something, that whether that is an executive session discussion, or whether that's open session, I'm not done with this. I feel like we need to resolve this. And we need the mayor to collaborate with us on what potential possibilities we could take to go forward.
Thank you. Council Vice President Kritzer?
I appreciate the conversation. And I do want to express my appreciation for those who served on the commission. And I think the conversation so far makes some sense to me in terms of, there's a lot of different options in terms of how we might proceed on this. Because eventually, hopefully, there's this, some sort of review of the salaries will happen since that process got stalled. Similarly, we stalled on the mayor's salary process as well. So, but, you know, an opportunity that we haven't talked about as well is that we could appoint a new commission. It seems like we're not able to reappoint the current, reinstate the current commission due to state law. And I'm not interested in doing something that's contrary to state law. But potentially what we could do, looking forward, and we can decide when we want to do that, would be to appoint a new commission. And I think to honor some of the themes that were brought up by the previous commission and the questions around how do we consider issues around equity related to council salaries. One thing I wanted to share that I heard about from City of Issaquah that just had their Salary Commission. their Salary Commission, is that they actually included a stipend for council members with a household income less than 80% of King County AMI, and looked at other factors such as a childcare stipend or other types of things, since I think some of the question was about, you know, how do we really increase access of people of all different types of backgrounds and incomes to our council and being able to serve in these roles. And so I think, and I think that's also, it's not necessarily just salary that we could look at as a council. I think it'd be interesting to just have a broader conversation of what are the types of things that we can do in our power as a city to be able to make sure that we're increasing the diversity of people who have access to serve in representation in our city. I know we've talked a little bit in the past about work we can do to increase access to our boards and commissions, which often feed into council roles. But I could see us having a bigger conversation that I think is really interesting about the kind of suite of things that we might consider in terms of barriers to access to decision-making bodies and our, decision-making roles in our city, and, and actions that we specifically can take, since obviously others can take those as well. So that's a conversation I'm very interested in having. And, and I think should we want to go and reappoint a new commission, or appoint, or we would confirm the mayor would appoint a new commission if we didn't want to repeal the ordinance, but actually go through the Salary Commission again, I would be interested in potentially looking at whether we could amend the ordinance to put, or maybe just send some initial requests of the commission of things to look at in terms of, you know, certain criteria or issues to consider as they do their, their business, because I think that was also, that's something to be learned from all of this is, is to share, share a clear, clear charter with our, our commission about, you know, some of the issues for them to consider.
Thank you. So to, to bring it back to the question, are you interested in potentially amending the ordinance but not repealing the most recent ordinance?
Yes, I would say I'm not, not at the moment interested in repealing the ordinance, since I do think there's a value in the Salary Commission, being an independent commission, because if we repeal it, my understanding is that we take the power back to us to make the decision.
Correct. I have confirmed with Mr. Haney that we could just amend the dates. Is that something you would be interested in? The June 1st deadline, or the May, May 1st deadline? In the current ordinance? Because as it currently stands, there cannot be another Salary Commission because the deadline that they would have had to make their decision was May 1st.
Understood. Okay. Well, and that they couldn't, we couldn't call a new commission?
Correct. Because their deadline has passed, that they would have had to have completed their work.
Let me think on that.
Okay. And then are you interested in an executive session to talk about the things that, the, the potential litigation and other issues that could arise from the actions?
Should other council members want to do that, I definitely support doing it in an executive session.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Anderson?
Just to clarify, I'm not clear. I would like some clarification on why an executive session would be necessary. Again, I'm not, I don't, don't know what we're talking about there.
If we, if we wanted to speak to the potential for litigation from the Salary Commissioners for being called negligent and, and such, that would have to take place in an executive session. And if we wanted to further, I believe if we wanted to further discuss the checks and balances and have more of those conversations that we've kind of just been having via email, I think it would be nice for us to actually all be in a room together and have that conversation so we can get these questions out of the way, so we aren't sending a lot of emails to Mr. Haney.
Thank you. Just trying to focus on what was on the Hopper form. So I think this, the couple of comments in response to Ms. Kritzer's comments, we are, I think you corrected yourself as well, and we can't direct the mayor to establish a Salary Commission. There's a deadline that we were, that we've built ourselves into a corner. That's one of the reasons that I'm recommending repeal, because it's essentially the same as what is already ordinance in those three ordinances that were prior, with exception of the date effective and the due date for their work. So that would have, council would take limited authority back and then be able to make those choices for the next term sometime before the end of this year, for the next four, for the, for, for positions that are being elected this year. It wouldn't affect positions two, four, and six, I think. So that doesn't mean in the future that problem wouldn't solve itself, or that next year another Salary Commission could be appointed to address that pay disparity in those, those positions as well.
It would be in an election year, two years?
I don't know that there's a requirement we need to do it in an election year.
It's in the ordinance.
In the current ordinance or the past ordinance?
I believe both.
So we can change ordinances, but the overall, the concept would be that it would be, it's possible for council to correct or partially resolve the issue and move forward with a decision. My personal opinion is that it was independent enough for me, for volunteers to propose an option that got submitted, and I think council can acknowledge that work. Mr. Haney suggested that we don't, we are not limited to that work as well. We could have a conversation around how to fix that. And deadlines are also something that we can manage as well. So I appreciate the conversation. Thanks, folks.
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart?
While Councilmember Fields is correct in, in my appetite to continue this conversation, I do want to just correct the characterization, and in part to honor our, our work that we did together when we were working on the mayor's salary. We had a really great discussion about how we got to these kind of sloppy processes, or how these, how these processes landed with us, and we knew that they were not good, and we wanted to resolve them for the future. And that included moving salary conversations to budget processes and realigning with that. So in, in fact, Councilmember Fields, you are correct. I, I do not have an appetite for taking this on while we have an active election going on. In fact, while folks still have ballots to return right now. But I, I do love the conversation about the barriers to entry for folks in our community so that we can have a more representative council. And to the extent that that includes salary, I would love to, you know, continue our work to, our, the intent that we had earlier this spring, to put that back in the budget process, as well as come back to some of these other ideas about how to be a more inclusive and representative city. I just want to clarify on that.
Thank you. Are you interested in an executive session to further learn?
I don't believe one is necessary.
Okay. And anyone else? Councilmember Carson?
So I, I don't favor repeal. I, I think we, if we wanted to reenact the Salary Commission, we could, it could be amended to, I mean, we, we've already amended it to change it to five, because it's hard to find seven people who want to serve on the commission. So, and obviously the dates, to be relevant, would need to be updated. Straight repeal, I think, as Mr. Haney points out, has a myriad of problems that come with it. So I, I think that one is out for me. And I, I prefer an arms-length kind of approach to this, because I, I do think it's in the best interest of the community and of us as representatives of that community for it to be kind of independently selected or, or, you know, and, and maybe have some guardrails on there, some, make, make it clear what the charter is, that, you know, we have a budget to live with, we're, we're not getting any, I mean, we're not getting any more ongoing revenue. I mean, we may have one-time revenue, but that is, is, does not a structural balance budget make. So I, I think it needs to be clear, you know, kind of what we're talking about. Are we talking, is this a cost of living situation, or maybe slightly more than that? Okay, based on the fact that it hasn't been changed in a while. But I think it needs to be clear to those who are on that commission what their, what the guardrails are, what, you know, what, what the limits of, not limits, but what they need to really be considering to make a good decision for the community. So.
Are you at all interested in an executive session?
I don't see how it's necessary. So no.
Okay. Sorry, I'm losing, Councilmember Fields?
So the reason, well, three things. One, I really appreciate Councilmember Kritzer, and also Councilmember Stewart. I think there is some constructive structure in what you've said on how we could potentially move forward. Before, I'm okay with moving forward. I, I'm, looks like I'm in the minority here. I think an important part of democracy is checks and balances, and I am not clear on what the checks and balances are in this situation. It sounds like council has no authority. It sounds like there's no other checks and balances other than the potential, as you described, the judicial system. And then, and that would take a proactive action. So there may be no checks and balances without somebody actually doing something. If that's the case, I just would want to know that, that, that the city can then move forward to the, a constructive potential solution as Councilmember Kritzer and Councilmember Stewart added to it. I, I think that Councilmember Carson's point about clear guidelines is important. The only thing I want to say, it's a bit of a commentary, setting the value of city staff, setting the value of city employees, setting the staff of city leadership, setting the staff, or the value of council, it's, we do that first, then we say, how do we budget? We don't say, oh, the police chief's worth a million dollars, but we only got $50. So that's not how that's done. So I, I don't agree with the premise that we should be limited because there's not budget for us. That's, that's not the right approach. We need to find out what is the value in the interest of the community. I do think that there were some issues raised by the Salary Commission around equity, as Councilmember Kritzer pointed out. Those should not be dismissed. Those are really important concepts for the future of what we do. So I don't know what the right amount is. I'm, I'm not advocating for an amount, but I am advocating for the conversation. And, but before we can move to step two, I need to know that the current step we're sort of have made is on solid ground.
So my thoughts on this are, I still see value in an executive session, because I do believe there are questions, such as the checks and balances, that remain, that I feel would be best suited for that, that space, and for us to be able to all be on the same page and not have so many emails to Mr. Haney in our inboxes that we may or may not see. So I would advocate for that to be our step one, is to have that executive session and get that clarity, and then continue the conversation around potential repeal of the ordinance or not. I would be in favor, after hearing the conversation, of just repealing the most recent ordinance, because that takes away those barriers of needing, it having had that deadline in May. And so then something could potentially take place through the rest of the year. Whether or not it does, we don't actually have the, the say in that matter. So that is, that's where I am with it. If anyone else has any thoughts? Council Vice President Kritzer?
Just on that last point, it's unclear to me if we do repeal the most current ordinance, if it does revert, or whether it actually puts us at the level where we are. It's the state law, where we took back the power.
I think we can, just like we did with the recent, I think it was a fire ordinance, where we rolled it back to the previous one. I believe we could take a similar action on this ordinance to repeal and revert to the prior ordinance. Is that?
Yeah. That wasn't my understanding from Mr. Haney, so I would just say.
This is why I think we need an executive.
We should get the, yeah, maybe we, I would just say, I don't think we need to be, in terms of timeline on this, super hasty. Let's take our time, get the information that we need to have a thoughtful conversation on what to do about the ordinance.
Okay. Any further? Councilmember Con?
Thank you. I still hear a lot of questions from council, and obviously, many of those questions have been asked to the city attorney already. And I obviously hear some proposed solutions, like Councilmember Anderson's, which is put forward, and potentially Councilmember Kritzer's amendment to the original, or to, to the current ordinance. But where I stand at this point in time is, I do still have a lot of questions, and it seems like others do too, on the legality of the situation, as well as of, of the past situation, the actions that have been previously taken, as well as what path forward we have, again, from a legal standpoint. And so it, it seems like this is a very difficult conversation to have in an open meeting like this, given kind of, I don't know, it seems like concerns about what other liabilities and, you know, concerns might come up having this in an open public discussion. And then on top of that, there's kind of disjointed conversations happening over email. So personally, I would be, I would like to continue this conversation. I think it is important for democracy, as well as for equity, for us to be proactive. I also do not have a stake in the game. I am not running for reelection. So this is, you know, truly, I, I agree, this is for future councils and being able to create a more diverse, and economically diverse council and government. And so I would be amenable to an executive session discussion. And even if this proposal that Councilmember Anderson has put forward, still, I, I would like to continue this and potentially, because I don't know personally what the options are moving forward. But I do feel like something needs to be done. But I would prefer that be done in executive session.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson?
Process question regarding the Hopper form. So I did not receive Mr. Haney's comments until I checked my email today. I don't know if he sent them yesterday, but I submitted this form Wednesday, or Thursday morning. So in the future, what is the step where there's legal review before it comes to council, to be told no effectively? I'm not embarrassed about it, but, but.
So that, generally speaking, the Hopper form would then inform if we go for legal review. This was passed along by the mayor's office to Mr. Haney so that we could have, I believe so that we could have an informed conversation for tonight.
Got it.
So.
Thank you. All right. So normally, the step would be after the form is submitted. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Council Vice President Kritzer?
I would note on process, too, that I think this proposal, because it had a proposal for the next meeting for us to take an action, I imagine that might have been why Mr. Haney jumped on it sooner, assuming that, that we were going to have this discussion and that we might take an action versus, for example, the last Hopper form was a request for a study session, which may include legal review on that piece of legislation, which you have like a longer timeline on. So we're still working that Hopper form out.
Only number two, so we got, we got some growing pains here. So what I'm hearing currently is, there are still questions that need to be addressed as far as responsibilities that we can have an executive session. Just a reminder, any discussion around the ordinance would need to happen in open session. But I think to get to the point of understanding what actions folks would be comfortable taking around an ordinance amendment, repeal, or whatever that would look like, I, I feel there are, what I'm hearing from everyone is there are still some lingering questions that would need to be addressed in executive session. So I would suggest that I work with Council Vice President Kritzer and the mayor to set up that executive session, maybe for next week. I'm not sure if Mr. Haney is available.
I don't know if he is available, and I also know one of our council members is absent from that meeting, so it would probably be better to postpone it until September.
That is, that is true. Thanks for that reminder. Thanks for that reminder. So we will work to find a day that we can have that executive session so we can get these questions answered, make sure that we're all comfortable and confident in whatever actions may take place after that. Councilmember Stewart, did you have something else?
I, I lost track of it in the conversation. So did we have majority interest in the executive session? Because I just want to be sensitive of the time in this.
I, I am very much interested. I heard Councilmember Anderson, Fields, and, and Khan are very much interested, and Councilmember Kritzer said she would be amenable as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Okay. We will work to make that happen. Thank you for the engaging conversation, everyone. I appreciate it. Any other items for council talk time? I know ballots are due. The drop box is open. You have until Tuesday, the first, I believe it is, to turn in your ballot, and our next meetings, committee of the whole and regular business will be on Wednesday, August 2nd, so don't turn, tune in on Tuesday, it's on a Wednesday. Mayor Bernie? And then Councilmember Anderson?
Yeah, just a really quick reminder, if you do want to use the drop box at City Hall this weekend, there is a festival going on at the same time, and so there will be assistance to get to the drop box, or you can put it in the mail, you don't even need a stamp, or you can take it to our Marymore Village Community Center as well, to that drop box. But it was, it'll be very busy at City Hall over the weekend if you drop it off, but someone will be there to help you as well. And next Tuesday, when we have, when we do have our business meeting, there's also Rockin' on the River at the same time.
Next Wednesday.
Wednesday. Yes, Wednesday. Sorry. National Night Out, Tuesday, Wednesday council meeting, and also now Rockin' on the River is at the same, basically at the same time. So just know, there's a lot going on, so be prepared for that.
Yes. And just around, around the drop box this weekend, is drive-up availability not a thing? Because I know we got complaints about that last year.
I think we're going to make it happen, but I think it's just going to be very congested, so people might choose to go to the other drop box.
Thank you. I think that's important for accessibility reasons. Appreciate that. Councilmember Anderson?
I believe National Night Out applications are due tomorrow at 5:00 PM, the 25th.
It certainly has closed.
It has closed. Darn. All right. Well, I guess we'll, council will hear where our assignments are by Tuesday, so thank you.
Yes, and so next Tuesday, the reason we do not have a meeting on Tuesday is National Night Out, and so check with your neighborhood or check for a party happening in your neighborhood if you want to meet our police department, our fire department, and some city electeds. Anyone else have anything for council talk time? Seeing none, that brings us to the end of our agenda, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.